Can you imagine how much I love you?
The mics are on. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the October fourteenth Board of Education meeting, and standing as you're able, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by none other than Ms. Celine Madeline, whose name, last name I forgot.
Marshall.
Marshall. Thank you, Madeline. You did a great job, of course. We're dealing with some slight technical issues, but we've got it. The see, interesting, I'd like to open the floor to public comment, a member of the public. No, we have no public comment at this point, so we'll just skip over that. I have no response to previous public comment, so we'll get right on to the revision approval of the agenda. Items can be added or removed, or the order changed at any time at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding. Further, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Thanks, Michael. I'd like to move to approve the agenda as revised, moving number seven, Administration and Board Committee Updates underneath Discussion Items, just to.
What number is that?
Moving number seven underneath number nine. It would become number nine. To be cognizant of our guests speaking before us.
Why not put our guests just before the Administration Board Updates?
Flip flopping eight.
Seven and eight.
That's fine, too. Yep, as long as they get to speak first.
They all get to speak first, alright. Any other changes from any other member of the board? Alright, with that in mind, all in favor, please say aye.
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 For the revised motion.
In a second.
Oh, do we have a second? Here we go, J.S. Tim Austin seconds it. Do we have all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. We will move eight in front of seven, just swap out seven and eight, but that does not change our student showcase, and I will pass the microphone over to Gillian Hayes, our student representative.
Hello. Today we have Ms. Celine, which is Madeline Marshall, who is our Ms. Celine, Sophie Zavinskis, which is our first runner-up, and myself as second runner-up, with Kim Bryant.
Is the microphone on now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Set. Okay, perfect. So, hi, I'm Madeline Marshall. I'm so incredibly honored to be the seventy-seventh Ms. Celine. I'm here with Gillian Hayes, Ms. Celine's second runner-up, and Sophie Zavinskis, Ms. Celine's first runner-up, has dance team practice tonight, so unfortunately she's not able to attend, but go Hornets. And then we are here with our co-director, Kim Bryant, who does so much for our community, and truly without her, Ms. Celine would not be possible, and definitely would not run us smoothly. So, thank you so much, Mrs. Bryant. Next slide. Okay, perfect. So, Ms. Celine is a beautiful tradition dating back to nineteen forty-eight, where esteemed young women compete for a scholarship. Ms. Celine serves her community for one year. Each Ms. Celine's journey is different and unique to the women holding the title, but all remains focused on community pride and service throughout our local events. This year, we had twelve incredible contestants go out for Ms. Celine. Thank you. So, the Ms. Celine process. Unfortunately, there is a stereotype behind pageants that it is a beauty contest, and that simply is not true with Ms. Celine Scholarship and Pageant. So, for our applicants, you have to fill out this intense, or rigorous, application that opens in March and closes June first. And so, this includes you have to submit your transcripts, as well as two letters of recommendation, while responding to several essay questions. In June, we have headshots with our official Ms. Celine photographer, and you also develop a bio that will be read onstage. And then, my favorite is Ms. Celine Week. So, Ms. Celine Week is the first week of August. And so, Ms. Celine Week kicks off the first Sunday of August with a thirty-minute interview with our judges at City Hall. And you're gonna have an interview someday, so why not prepare for it now? It's an incredible opportunity that I one hundred percent recommend to all women in high school to do. And so, then, at least, it's been Thursday the last two years, we have our opening number, and so this is the first time that we're, all the contestants are all together. And so, this is a great time to build connections and network with each other. And then, Friday, we have the opportunity to participate in our community service project, and that is the top-left photo. I think it's cut off a little bit, but that's okay. And that is Stuff the Bus. Stuff the Bus is something that we hold here actually at Liberty, and so, all the, well, if you're here, the contestants get on the bus, and we get to go and collect school supplies, and then we come back and sort it. It's truly incredible how generous our community is in supporting those families that are less fortunate. And then, of course, Pageant Day, which is so much fun. So, on Pageant Day, we are asked several questions. One of the questions we are asked is called the Judges Question. And so, the judge will ask you something from your application, your interview, or something that they would simply like to know about you. And then, another question that, like, later on that they will ask is called like the Community Question. And the Community Question is revolved around our community. So, this year, my question was, what's your favorite local business? And please give us a thirty-second elevator pitch. Next slide, please. And then, what Ms. Celine means to me. I get to share my love for our community in so many ways. I love that I get to work hand-in-hand with our incredible local businesses as I get to come in and help them with their special events. They give so much to our community, and so being able to be there and support them on their special events means so much to us. I love that I get to make, to make connections with our youngest and oldest citizens. I've gotten to go into our senior center several times and just had some great conversations with some of our oldest citizens. We'll also get to play game nights with them, which is so much fun, and then also being with some of our youngest students. So, Ms. Celine was at the elementary open houses, so we got to see lots of children's faces. We also participate in so many events throughout the year, from the RAC Center, as well as all the events that the schools put on, we get invited to. So, it's truly incredible that we get to see some of our younger students and citizens. I love that I get to attend and support our beloved Celine traditions, such as the fair. We were there on Thursday night presenting the People's Choice Award. Some of our festivals, like Oktoberfest that we just had, which is so fun to be there. And then, our parades, like the Homecoming Parade and our Holiday Parade, which we have a big one coming up this year, the fiftieth annual. And also, one that's not on here that we're in right now specifically is our annual scarecrow competition. And then, I also love that I get to be a role model for our community pride and an activist to support growth and change while being, like, while honoring our roots. So, this year, as Ms. Celine, my platform was to make sure I'm the bridge from the past to the future. Specifically for Ms. Celine, we are being the bridge from the past. So, there are seventy-seven Ms. Celines, and that's actually a small number of women. And so, I think it's truly, we have to honor the women that came before us, because without them, we wouldn't, like, not be here right now. And truly, they're the ones that built Ms. Celine, so I want to honor them. And then, right now, I'm making sure that we're staying focused on our community with everything and everything that our community needs, making sure that women's voices are heard. I know I'm jumping a little bit to my next point, but just making sure people are feeling empowered and being heard. And then, of course, in the future, we want to inspire our next generation of kids, the women that are gonna run next year for Ms. Celine, but also for generations to come. I think it's so important, and I love Ms. Celine, and I want to see this tradition live on for so many years. And then, I love being Ms. Celine, because I get to empower fellow young women and provide them a safe space for them to speak and use their voices and know that they are heard.
We just have a slight technical issue as Ben logs back in again. Well, since we're pausing, do you all have power on your outlets? No, neither do I. Okay. We'll see if we can pull a power cable over at some point.
I'm saying yes. Well, thank you all for being here tonight and supporting Celine education. We appreciate you guys so much, and thank you for everything that you do.
There may be a question or two from the board, if you are ready to answer.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, Nate.
Could you tell us your favorite business?
Well, okay. I am a total Celine girl. I absolutely love all of our businesses. For the question that I had onstage, I could have done so many thirty-second elevator pitches. I know mine specifically onstage was towards Mancino's, but mine was specifically, do you want me to tell you what it was, actually?
Yes, please.
Okay. And so, truly, you can pick any different kind of business in Celine, because they're all incredible. But for me, it was Mancino's that came up onstage. So, my response was, Mancino's is incredible, from their pizzas to the grinders to ice cream. They have delicious food, but when you go to Mancino's, you get to see Kevin Lawson, and he's incredible. But when you're at Mancino's, you're not eating delicious food, but you're also supporting our Celine community, because Kevin Lawson gives so much to Celine High School and our clubs, and truly is so involved with our Celine community. So, like I mentioned before, you're not only eating delicious food, you're also supporting our Celine community. Perfect. It might be answered later on. Okay, so going on to our twenty-twenty-five scholarship recipients. So, our first award that was given out was the Academic Award, and this went to Addison Langa. I'm incredibly fortunate to have won the Community Service Award, Ms. Celine, or Spirit of Ms. Celine, and Miss Congeniality. Miss Congeniality is voted on with the peers, so are contestants. And then, our White Family Scholarship was, which was new this year, went to Gillian Hayes. And then, going forward, our Ms. Celine's second runner-up is Gillian Hayes, Ms. Celine's first runner-up, Sophie Zavinskis. And then, I'm so incredibly honored to be Ms. Celine to twenty-twenty-five. Next slide, please. Oh, perfect. So, our community sponsors. Some of our notable sponsors are Catherine Kelly Orthodontics, Renew Spa and Salon, Heidi McClellan Photography, Still Waters Counseling, DTE, The Koi Family, Root Awakenings, and Kim Bryant. But I would also like to mention the generosity of our community from our local businesses inviting us in for their special events to come and support them, but also our community, our community through all of our fundraisers, like Stuff the Bus, but also when I put on my Crown and Sash, I have lots of people come up to me, and I actually get to hear how Ms. Celine has had an impact on them. And I love getting to hear how previous Ms. Celines have inspired them or had just like a heartfelt moment with them that resonates. So, it's truly incredible that I get to hear about previous Ms. Celines' stories, but also their history. And then, our four judges this year were Mayor Morrow, Jeffrey McLaughlin, Julie Picknell, and Shannon Nacalasio. Next slide, please. Okay. What we have done so far. So, starting off strong, in August, we had the Celine Elementary Open Houses. So, we went to all four buildings, so each of us were at one of the elementary schools from K to three, and then we all met up at Heritage for the last forty-five minutes. And then, we had the Celine Social Service Meyer Campaign to help Celine social service. And to end the month, we had the People's Choice Award at the Celine Fair. Starting off in September, we had a ribbon cutting and the Homecoming Parade. We've made our Celine Scarecrow Competition, which voting starts tomorrow. And then, we had the Chad Tough Run. And then, this month so far, to go along with the scarecrow theme, When I Grow Up, we have been outside of Benny's Bakery these past two Saturdays, and we will be out this Saturday, too, doing youth interviews, asking children what they want to be when they grow up someday. So, if you haven't already, I highly recommend going out around town and looking at the incredible scarecrows by, built by businesses, families, schools, and so much more. I mean, like, I'm personally biased, because my favorite's the Ms. Celine Scarecrow, but truly, they're all incredible. And even if you don't have time to walk around town, you can see them as you're driving by. Also, on the screen, you can see what Ms. Celine has become. And so, this year, we put together what previous Ms. Celines have and are doing right now. And so, it's truly like Barbie. You can be anything you want to be. And so, all, we have Ms. Celines all across all different fields, and they're all flourishing in what they do. So, it's truly incredible to see how our former Ms. Celines and what they are doing. What is planned? So, we have the Sweethearts Dance, actually in two days, held here at Liberty. And then, we have Trunk or Treat next week, which is our annual Trunk or Treat. We have Toys for Tots starting in November through December, and so we will be promoting Toys for Tots, so please bring your unopened, unwrapped toys and drop them off at our boxes, and we will post more on where our boxes are with the locations on our Ms. Celine socials. So, we're super excited for that. Also, on December sixth, we have our tree, Celine Tree Lighting and our fiftieth annual parade, which is incredible. We are so excited. We are also Santa's assistants throughout the month of December. So, also, I would look at our social, like, socials, and you'll get to see where we might be. And then, I'm so excited about this next one. So, Little Miss Charm School. Little Miss Charm School was one of my many inspirations to become Ms. Celine someday. And so, Little Miss Charm School is for girls coming of age to empower and support other women and to practice their public speaking, which is incredible that they can do it at such a young age. And so, I'm so excited to bring this back, and so, I'm so excited. And then, we have March's Reading Month, and so, we often get invited into the schools to read to children, so we're so super excited about that. We also have the Elementary Pancake Supper next week, specifically at Woodland. I will be reading a book there, and I know Gillian will be signing, which is so exciting. And then, we have the Valentine's Day Ball in February, and that will most likely be our debut for our Little Miss Charm School graduates. And then, of course, the Polar Plunge. We often get asked, how can we support the Ms. Celine family? And truly, our response is, just invite us. We love to be in our community and support our local businesses and our community members. We want to be invited, and we will do our best to absolutely be there, because we are here to support you and we love everyone in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Did you want to ask or say?
Sure.
Thank you. My question is, both of you are so very involved in, in this community and in our school district, and so, you have lots of other students behind you. I was wondering if you could give some tips for other students that might be coming up and interested in Ms. Celine, or just interested in clubs and athletics, or, or activities overall. How do you balance your academics with these extracurriculars? What are, what are some tips you can give?
Absolutely. I wish I could be looking at you guys, but I'm pretty sure, can you hear me if I speak this way? Well, I'm gonna talk this way, but no, I'd rather be looking at you, too. Okay, so for Ms. Celine, for all girls in the audience, I would one hundred percent recommend going out for Ms. Celine. It's truly an incredible experience. Like I said, you're gonna have an interview someday. You will have to network and be with, around people, and you will also be a part of community service at some point. So, truly, this is an incredible experience that we have in our community, that you can start young and practice it. And then, also, to go along with academics and clubs, just make sure school always comes first. You can be a student-athlete, but student comes before the athlete. So, you need to make sure that you are doing well in all of your courses and classes, and then you can do everything else. And so, truly, you have to find your perfect balance. And to find this balance, you need to make sure, again, that you're doing your schoolwork, and then do something else that you love. So, for me, I absolutely love to volunteer, so I knew this was the perfect opportunity for me. And so, as Ms. Celine, I have so many opportunities to volunteer, and it's truly incredible. So, it's something that I love to do, and I love to spend my time doing, so I might as well spend it doing something that I love. Oh, yeah.
For those who are.
Go ahead, Gillian.
For those who want to do Ms. Celine.
For those who want to do Miss Celine, it is open to upcoming juniors and seniors. Um, this is a heads up. Sorry, sophomores and freshmen might want, might want to wait a little bit. Um, as I am in so much, I do understand the pressures of, oh, I don't have enough time on my hands. Just communicate with people, communicate with your teachers, communicate with your coaches, communicate with whoever you're around. Like, I've had to cancel on my poor coach so many times because I need to go home and do my homework. He's like, oh, but you have weight training. I'm a student athlete, so you have to put the student in front of the weight training. I can weight train at home. It's okay. But ask for help, ask for assistance, and in the end, just do as best as you can.
Also with Miss Celine, if we have a big test coming up, um, we know that there are three people on the court, which is incredible. So, if one of us have a test and we cannot miss and we need to study, the other two will show up and make sure that it's okay if you can't be there because you need to make sure that school's your priority. And that's something that Mrs. Bryant and Mrs. Koi make sure that we know too, that school always comes first.
Uh, Secretary Burwick had a question.
Yes. Uh, not so much a question, it's more of a, I wanted to affirm the points that you made in your presentation. Um, the application process is, um, and you put the effort in, right? It's not, there is the application, the interview, uh, grades are a part of it. Um, so I really appreciated that you pointed all of that out. Um, and also showcased how involved you guys are in the community and all the events that you do. Um, I, I play a small part in the background and, uh, even the contestants helped me there. Madeline helped me with a webpage update. So, they are very busy and very active and they do a lot of great work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you so much. Um, actually, Ms. Darcy Burwick made our Miss Celine page where you can see our former Miss Celines, um, what they are doing right now. And so, thank you so much. We appreciate your help with everything.
Excellent. Well, if there are nothing else from the board, I would like to thank you very much. Yes, you are very busy and, and thanks for maintaining and keeping, keeping yourself centered while you're doing all this. And we really appreciate you talking about the program as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're having all the best this year.
Thank you.
We now have a scheduled report on the CTE Millage. And while you're getting set up, Kara Stemmer, I'm going to look around for some electricity.
I'll eat your cookie while you're gone.
Did you want to take a picture with Miss Celine?
Oh, my goodness.
Board?
Kim, you want a picture?
Picture with Miss Celine.
Thank you. I love company. Oh, good. We didn't vote out. Great.
My machine is starting to say. Well, this would have been a second time for me if I, if it died, like, yeah. Already? Well, he's bringing, he's going to connect at the... Ben is going to plug in up there, I think, and we're going to... What about on the floor? Okay. Or I can just go without. I'm going to go without. We'll start again. I'd like to introduce, uh, Kara Stemmer, who's the Director of the South and West Washtenaw Consortium, otherwise known as SWWC.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. Uh, important time of the year as we are a few weeks away, couple of weeks away, I should say, from the November 4th, uh, vote for the CTE Countywide Millage. So, I know I come every April and kind of do an update on the SWWC. And I have some, we have a new face on the board and just in general, I like to continue with our branding. So, I always start with what the SWWC is. And so, just as a reminder, we, um, we have 10th, well, I should say, we have juniors and seniors that can apply for our CTE, our Career and Technical Education classes. It's application-based. So, 10th graders, it starts our recruiting, um, phase. So, Molly Wiesel, who is our Special Populations Coordinator, and I will travel to all six districts. Will speak to the, to the 10th graders and we will encourage them to sign up for, um, a CTE class for their junior and/or senior year. So, um, we serve six districts, Dexter, Chelsea, Lincoln, Myland, Manchester, and Celine. Uh, so that's kind of what the SWWC is. We can move on to the next slide. And I kept this slide on here. I looked for, uh, the most recent, the 24, 25 data, but it's, they don't, the state does not have it yet. So, I like to just point out two pieces of information on this particular slide. The question comes up a lot, why the CTE, the CTE Millage right now? Like, why don't we wait? Why didn't we do it before? Um, but I just want to say that 70, roughly 78% of our students that complete our follow-up survey after they leave, so this survey has to be within six months of them graduating. Uh, we reach out to our students and we say, are you using the skills you learned in your CTE class? And it's a very, I'm proud to say that 78% of the students in the state say they are. So, when you look at data from around, um, you know, the county and we have a lot of students sitting in the room and they say, is engagement up or down in classrooms? And we all know that we struggle with engagement sometimes in the classroom. And I think that's where CTE really, um, is lifted. It's the hands-on learning, the not sitting behind a desk, following your passion. And so, it's exciting to say that, you know, it's also employability skills. So, it's not just the curriculum per se, but it's learning those employability skills. So, 78% of our, um, students are saying they're using their skills. And then the other one I wanted to highlight on this slide is that, um, our classes don't compete with AP classes. We complement them. We have many students that take AP classes. We also have many students that, um, you know, take the CTE route as well and they merge them. They, they'll take one that complements the other. So, you know, I, we have many students, 60, I think it says 61, 62% that are going on to post-secondary. And then we also have, and that's just the four-year degree, and then 29, 30% that are going on to an associate's. So, a lot of our students are going on to, um, to college and then others are going on to work in the workforce. And so, we are truly just preparing them for that skillset of college-bound or career-bound. And we're preparing them that way. That's what that slide's for. And again, takes me to why we're here tonight, um, November 4th. So, if anyone is 18, sitting in the audience, this is, uh, important. And I'm here just to provide some additional information, kind of like the pulse of where we are at on behalf of Celine and just in general, the ISD. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. I included this slide just because, kind of referencing the engagement, the student engagement. We all know that, um, enrollment in our schools has gone down. But what this slide shows, the turquoise blue, shows that over the last three years or four years since COVID, our interest in career and tech ed classes has increased. So, we haven't quite doubled, um, but we have, we've gone from, you know, roughly 1,800 to 3,100 students wanting to take career and tech ed. And obviously, when we have that type of demand, we, what we're running into is we can't always meet all the needs of our students. So, when you're deciding on your schedule and you're like, I want to take an SWWC class, CTE class, um, you know, you may not get in just because we don't have, we only have so many seats that we can offer. Thanks, Ben. So, again, I'm trying to like, just think of, to help voters make an educated decision. And so, when you think, why now? Um, Washtenaw County is often known as being, you know, we have some great universities in our backyard. We tend to have a lot going on and we're proud. However, we are one of the last counties in the state to offer a vocational millage. And that's troublesome, um, only because we need a sustainable funding model for our current programs. We need to continue to expand. We have a surplus of students wanting our classes, as I just stated. And so, we need to meet that demand. Um, scheduling comes around every March and I want to offer every student that wants a CTE class, a seat in our, um, classes. But we're running into that, we just can't because everyone, as you could see, the demand was up. So, we, through Washtenaw County, um, SWWC has 21 SIP codes. That means we have programs that we can offer a wide, um, variety of classes. But other counties, Annaber, or, I'm sorry, other districts. Annaber has 13, Ipcy has five, and then Whitmore Lake has four. So, this millage would help expand programs in those other schools so that students have access to, to have more CTE, um, opportunity. So, primarily, the district that you live in doesn't determine your opportunities. So, again, um, why now? Like, why is this on the ballot? The state, because we have been one of the very few, um, counties left in the state without a millage. The county has granted us, um, called the Equipment Grant. And we've had it the last three years. Uh, this year, we did not have it. Um, but for the state gave us, and this is, this is money that has to be allocated across the county. So, um, you know, with the help of Ryan Rowe and just the needs of each one of our CTE classes, we were able to look at the, um, some classes that needed some support, whether that be equipment, curriculum updates. And that's what the state provide, had intended with these grants. And that's what really has allowed us to sustain and expand some of our current opportunities. So, the growth that we've seen the last couple of years has been because of this grant. Um, these, that, that we've had every three years. So, we didn't have it last year. We don't have it this year. And, um, so, you know, if this millage were to pass, it would help support some of what this has helped, um, you know, sustain in the last three years. Um, the ISD just came out with this graphic and, and I want to speak to it for a second. I put all of our current classes on the left. We have 24. Some of our classes fall under the same SIP code. Um, so for example, Health Science and Exercise Science fall under the state, same state certified SIP code. Uh, so those are all of our classes and I'm excited there are students here because not everybody knows what the SWWC is. And these are, I, I'll stand up for all day long and talk about how phenomenal they are and how important our instructors are to our students. But I want to speak to like, what this millage will do. Um, so, it will help sustain our programs. So, like I said, right now, all of the CTE programs in our county, um, it costs about 10.3 million to run those. And so, if this millage were to pass, then that would help support and sustain our current programs. So, I, I've been asked, will the SWWC still be around if the millage passes? And that answer is yes. We will still be around. Um, we'll still be offered to six districts. Will there be opportunity for other students to come? I'm sure of it. Um, we're going to have different layers, uh, so that we do have opportunities. Uh, right now, we have, for example, I'll use our Building Trades Program. Dexter is creating, has, uh, has a program out there. Myland has a program and we, Celine has a program. So, we didn't, Celine used to be, the SWWC used to be the only offering for building trades. And we just had, the demand has gone up. We need people in construction and we want to serve them. And so, we've developed, with the help of the grant, um, we were able to build some new programs. And that is kind of what we would be doing with this. So, we would be sustaining what we currently have. We would be, um, building and expanding to meet the needs of all the demand of the students. And then we would be, um, I think it's important and we can all agree that we start talking about career readiness at a younger age. And so, building in some curriculum and just getting students excited about all the new careers that are coming, um, that are being developed that we might not even think about. And then just also make it more equitable so that all students have the opportunity. Um, I can share one of my biggest, most, um, prideful moments of the day is when I stand at the doors and I greet the students from the other schools. So, we have about 900 students coming and going from our 23 programs. That's a lot of kids. It's a lot of students, a lot of logistics. But the highlight is seeing them come and, you know, say, they're walking in with their welding helmets or they're walking out with their baking goods, um, their baked goods. So, I just, it's a, it's a prideful moment for me because they have this opportunity when otherwise they might not. So, right now, um, I think September 28th, all the absentee ballots were mailed. And so, those are sitting in mailboxes. I just want to remind people to get those back by November 4th. And then we have decided, um, I believe in the power of sight. So, our labs are amazing. Uh, our instructors have worked with industry partners to purchase and, and like, set up the labs that they replicate industry. And so, if you walk through any one of our Career and Tech Ed Labs, you'll see exactly what the same equipment that Lieber is using or that Toyota is using. It was like an epiphany for me when I walked through these. I'm like, this is so exciting. Our students, I often say, I don't even know if they know that the, what the opportunity that is before them. Um, so, they do when they go on tour and go on, um, you know, field trips and such. But, so anyway, we, we're opening our space on October 21st, Tuesday, from 5:30 to 7:00 to any community member that wants to come through the SWWC classes. Um, we're going to have our Building Trades location downtown Celine open. We'll have our Cosmetology location open. And then we'll have all of our labs open at Celine High School. And so, I invite anyone that wants to come learn more about the millage. If they want to see our labs, we'll have some instructors. I have a SWWC Student Advisory, um, group, so some students will be there too. I'm excited that they have volunteered their time. So, if you are around and you want to come see the power of CTE, I invite you to join us on October 21st. I'm going to open it up to questions.
Any pressing questions from the board at this point? Go ahead.
Okay. So, mine's more of a statement and actually you touched on it, um, in your slides about the 10 million because I've seen some, the press release and then I've seen on social media about how it's just a, a money grab for our general funds and, but it's not. It's similar to how the Act 18 is set up where you have to spend the money in CTE to be reimbursed and have it go back into the general. Technically, it'll go back into the general fund because it's reimbursed to the, back to the district. So, it's not like you pass the CTE Millage on November 4th and just a bunch of money flows into the schools.
All of the funds collected will be allocated directly back to CTE.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you for confirming. Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yeah. Kara, can you put up, um, the slide that had the 24 different programs on it again?
I said one, yep.
Students in the audience. Can you guys take a look at this and look at all of the classes that are up there? Parents or guardians, if you happen to be in the audience and you can answer for your own kids. I'd like to see a raise of hands. How many of you in the audience have taken at least one class or, or will be taking one of these classes in your high school career at Celine?
It's exciting.
That's pretty good. That's good. It's being used. Vote yes.
For sure it is. Uh, Darcy?
And I know that it's, we're talking about it being a Washtenaw Vocational Millage, but it, because we are servicing, um, school districts that are split in counties, money is coming in from those other counties if you are in that school district. So, it really is a burden that is shared, uh, across an even greater area than just Washtenaw County.
Thank you. Uh, Nate, oh, and Gillian first, then Nate. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say that I have been in three SWW programs. I was in Botany in 10th grade and I can commercially landscape, which was incredibly cool. Um, I've been in the culinary program and I have been confirmed by ServeSafe, so I can professionally serve food. And I was in welding and all three of the programs, I absolutely adored. So, I just want to put it out there, even if you're going into something that you don't think that you'll use, like, I probably won't use welding again, but it was a fantastic experience to see that kind of side of life. And I highly recommend it. And I highly recommend it.
Thank you, Jillian. I will just take a moment and respond to something she said. So all of our programs, all of our CTE programs have to have a state credential. So they're walking away, ServeSafe was, was culinaries, but every student is going to walk away with some competitive advantage compared to their peers. And that is a state requirement. So we, all of our 23 programs are state certified. That means our instructors are next level. They're meeting, they have to provide to the state documentation that they met all of this, you know, this criteria. And the certifications is one of them. Work-based learning, I spoke to that when I was here in April. Work-based learning is another one. Getting students out in industry, internships, having guest speakers, bringing people from industry, talking about how they got there and what the skillset is. I think that's invaluable. Thank you for bringing that up.
Kara, a question I had is, with the increased demand over the years and the benefit that these industries are experiencing from having experienced, ready-to-go employees, is there any reach from funding or subsidizing from the private industry?
So what, what I can say, and I want to say thank you to all of our industry partners, is they provide scholarship opportunities, they donate equipment, they provide their time. Liebherr comes in with our welding and our computer-integrated manufacturing and they give them, you know, opportunity to learn and certify. So they can't pay for like staffing per se, but they are providing opportunities for our students in that, whether that be donations. And, I'm sorry, internships, yep. So, again, just opportunities that they're, they're giving. And even a lot of our, I mean, each program has to have an advisory board. So two times a year, people from industry come and sit on a board with our, each program has to have one. And I just, I'll speak to Building Trades when I sat in, I go to as many as I can. And I sat in one last year and the instructor's like, we need, you know, he named off like five different things he needed. And every single one in that room went around and said, we will donate that, we will donate that, we will give you that. And that's, and that's the power of a great advisory board. Because again, if we don't get that money from either donations, again, the grant no longer occurs, then we have to look at going to the districts and saying, we need this money to, you know, keep students safe or to update the labs to be industry standard, to meet industry standards. So that's how they give back.
Anything from anybody else on the board? No other questions? Well, thank you. If questions do arise, Kara, I'm sure we will ask you.
You know where to find me, I'm happy to help, yeah.
I really came this close to putting a whole bunch of the CTE signs behind me. I'm sorry I chickened out, but there are more available in the front, correct?
We do, yes. We have yard signs for anyone that would like to have one. Thank you for your time.
And thank you so much and all the best with the vote.
Thank you.
We're doing things slightly different this evening. I'm going to, we've moved Administration and Board Committee updates up front. I'll just name, this time around, I'll mention each committee that we have. So the community understands that we work in many places. Starting with Superintendent, then Student Representative, then I'll run down the committees one at a time. And if we have reports from anybody, please chime in. And more often than not, there won't be a report. And we'll end with miscellaneous for the many, many things that we do beyond this table but are involved with the school. So we'll start with Superintendent Kowalski.
Thank you, Board President McVeigh. So as we turn into mid-October, I want to remind our families and staff that fall break is just around the corner. We have a half-day on Friday and no school on Monday. So enjoy that long fall break. The short break, though, is meaningful because you have time to look ahead at the many things to come. So I wish everyone a safe weekend, long weekend. But as the weather cools, I've been getting the familiar question often in buildings, so what about snow days? I just want to let you know that as Dr. Latch served this community so well with his snow day Steve, we are, plan to be having students play a role in these snow day announcements. At the same time, though, I want to acknowledge that not every family experiences a snow day in the same way. For some, schools provide structure, meals, supervision, and other resources, and those are deeply valued. And so while I am excited to include our students in those, and I am getting that question daily in mid-October about what we plan, I thought it was important to recognize that. Speaking of weather and communication, some of you may have seen in my recent message to the community that we're about to launch our How We Communicate series. It's launching soon from the Office of Communications and Community Relations. This is designed to help families understand with clarity and transparency how the district announces snow days, but also helps with clarity and transparency of other things that they might see in the day-to-day of Celine Area Schools. So, we have put a lot of work into that and we're looking forward to continued feedback. And we appreciate, we appreciate your attention to that when they start rolling out here. Many, many thanks to the parents and community members who have joined me at the Meet the Superintendent events in the summer into the fall. We did Pizza and Priorities last week. I had a small but mighty group of parents who gave us some insights and truly invaluable information as we continue to look forward for what's next for our students. Very people-centered, again, the parents and those who have joined us shared a lot of joy around the table about things that we're doing, but also great feedback. I'm also looking forward to the upcoming Tailgate with the Team, which maybe might tap into another group of community event, community members. And that is October 24th from 5:30 to 7:00 at Hornet Stadium. Also, we are doing Trunk or Treat. And just added the Special Education Listening Lab partnering with CEAC on that. And that is November 12th at 6:00 PM at Heritage Media Center. I appreciate everyone who's attended those events in the space we have created for listening, learning, and collaboration. I also want to just extend my sincere thanks, as I'm sure others will, to the Foundation for Celine Area Schools for celebrating our alumni. I got to meet some of them at the Friday's event. I also wanted to mention, tie these things together. Many of our graduates and alumni trace some of their success back to career in technical education, including one of the stories that was highlighted on Friday, on Friday, during Friday's event. So, if you haven't yet, I'll echo some other voices. I encourage you to visit the WISD website where there's a number of student reels. They tell the story better than us adults. So while we might talk about these wonderful things and the work that's being lifted up, I would really, really encourage you to go listen to some of those. I would also like to give a special thank you to Kara Summer for her leadership in career in technical education in Washtenaw County and beyond, and for her efforts to lead us through this initiative in Celine. And I think that's it. Fall break. Have fun.
Well, we, we've got to have a board meeting first, right?
Oh, yes, we need to finish that first.
Appreciate that. Student Representative Jillian Hayes.
I want to say hello to all the AP Gov kids. Hello, everybody. We'll probably be seeing you again, as I know you have to get to by the end of the trimester. I was sitting in the same seat a week prior begging Falkowski to let me submit a virtual meeting because I couldn't go to another one. Just wanted to say hi and that I see you all and good luck to you all. Fall sports are finishing up soon. I know Cross Country has their SEC championships coming up this Thursday, which is a little bit scary and a little bit sad for all of our seniors. To all of our seniors that are leaving their fall sport for the final time, it's going to hurt a lot and we'll get through it. Just a reminder to sign up for winter sports quite soon. As well, the Celinean High School Yearbook won a Spartan for their All Things Considered book. And this year's book, I'm not going to spoil, but has one of the highest honors of being recognized nationally, which only six books get shown, which means we get shown around the country as a role model of, hey, this is what your yearbook should look like if you want to win really high awards. And we have one of our editors-in-chief currently in the house, Carly. So, thank you for that. As well, we have the Craft Show coming up on November 8th. You will see a ton of sports and organizations out there helping out with parking, unloading and loading and being on the buses. I will be reaching out to non-high school schools and seeing what is happening over there. So I will bring you updates on that soon. And as well, at our next meeting, we will have the Connecting Program led by Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you so much. As a former yearbook advisor, I absolutely am impressed by our Celinean. And thank you. Citizens for a Quality Community, the Cool Kids Call It CQC. We're going to be meeting this Thursday and Mr. Hanson is our alternate. So you might get an emergency email from me if I can't make it on those. Chamber of Commerce, anything for Mr. Austin?
Yes, a few things. So the Chamber has a few things coming up. Ignite Your Leadership, that's October 30th from 8:00 to 9:30 AM at the EHM Professional Building Office. And then also Building Better Business Relationships. That's kind of their standing monthly meeting, breakfast meeting. That's November 11th, 2025, 8:00 to 9:30. And then the 50th Annual Holiday Parade, Saturday, December 6th at 5:00 PM downtown Celine. So, all of these things, if you want to be involved or register to go, you can go to www.celinechamber.org.
I understand that this year, the Celine Area Schools Board of Education is going to have some role in the parade. You may not have heard about it yet, but you will soon. Did you want to chime in on that? Do you want to spoil the surprise? Okay, thank you. The Foundation for Celine Area Schools, Jennifer Stevan.
Since our last board meeting, I was able to attend the Celine Alumni Committee get-together at Dan's Downtown Tavern, where Trustee Hanson attended as well and Rachel and Jackie and some other folks. Just a reminder, if you want to get involved with the Celine Alumni Committee, you don't necessarily have to have graduated from Celine. We just want a group of folks that are willing to support initiatives inside our community to recognize our heritage and help continue to make our community and school district a great place to thrive. Also, got to attend the Hall of Fame Football Game and really enjoyed the halftime festivities and taking pictures of all of the wonderful recipients. And one who couldn't be there, one that was deceased, but I think it was her brother that was there, who was a friend of my grandma's. So that was pretty cool, I thought. So, thank you and congratulations to all of those who won that wonderful award. Today was our Foundation for Celine Area Schools monthly meeting. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the last day to register for the Fall Luncheon. So this is our Fall Fundraiser. Our theme is Building Their Future, Funding Dreams From the Ground Up. It will be here next week on October 22nd at Celine High School in the Ox Gym. The reason it's at Celine High School this year and not at Liberty is because they want to be close to the STEAM Center and some activities and some viewing of the new space. So please try to register if you can. It's free to attend. You get to hear about all sorts of great building and staff grants and what those are being used for, which is really great. Just a reminder, if you are staff, they give away $100,000 approximately per year. And they're always taking applications. So if staff have a great idea or buildings have a great idea on how they would like to innovate and spend that money, please contact Stacy Rumsa, our Executive Director, or Julie Simon, our Grants Coordinator in the Foundation. Other things coming up, December 6th is the parade. So they'll be walking in that. It's our 50th year. February 20th is our big spring fundraiser at Weber's. We're doing the dueling pianos again, which was a real treat last year, or I guess I should say this year, it was the spring. And I think that's it. February 20th at Weber's.
Thank you. Board Associations, well, that's me. I actually, I'll start with the Washtenaw Association of School Boards. I serve as Celine's Rep. Representative on the Washtenaw Association of School Boards, all nine districts representative. I currently sit on the executive as a past president. Main discussion focused on upcoming professional development. We're planning a deep dive into school finance and examining how funding shapes board policies. We've got an amazing speaker, two actually, David Arson from Ann Arbor. He's extremely well-known in that field, and Brian Marcel. The session will run about 90 minutes. We're very cognizant of the fact that people will fall asleep when you talk about finance. So we're going to be looking at that very carefully. We can try and keep it lively. The dates for that will be either January 22nd, Thursday, or January 29th. We're also planning a March 12th session on artificial intelligence and its impact on schools. And I'm going to be meeting with Michigan Virtual University's Jamie Fitzpatrick tomorrow to work on partnering for that. We're going to be talking about large language models, privacy assessment, and also the environmental impact of AI and data centers. And in fact, I'm going to be visiting the University of Michigan's Forward School on Public Policy later this month. It's open to anyone, actually, if you want to join on, I think it's November 30th. If you're interested, I'll send you the information. I also met as part of the Michigan Association of School Boards, the Governmental Relations Committee. We met on Friday morning. Brenda Pilgrim, who many of you know, reminded us that we still don't have a federal budget. She did note that forward-funded programs can continue to draw funds, federal funds, for the rest of the fiscal year, but that's not going to affect us in this district at this point. Jennifer Smith, whom you all know, also shared updates on the finalized state budget and there are a few highlights. I don't want to step on your toes, Tim, so we'll make sure we coordinate, okay. Virtual days now will only count if a district applies for a special exemption. The GSRP will continue to be funded. The ELL funding has increased slightly and special ed remains funded at 100% of the target. There is one noticeable, notable change, though, is that the $100 million offset for MIPSers, that's the retirement fund that had been instituted during the Governor Snyder days, is no longer available. And we're going to do some shifting and adjusting on that. And I understand that our Chief Financial Officer is well aware of that. There are some other issues and some special areas called 164K, which could include potential penalties. And I understand you were, Dr. Kowalski, shared some of those earlier with us. We need to comply with a whole list of requirements, which we do in any case, anyway. But just, just to keep you up to date on that. Sex Education Advisory Board, Lauren Gold.
So, we met and we talked about the Be Safe Program and some barriers that we're running into in getting it instituted, but I'm hopeful that the team will find creative ways to get the kids that learning. We also reviewed the implementation this spring of our late elementary ed, middle school curriculum on puberty. And that is, you know, the team is working really hard to get that going this spring. So, it's very exciting. We talked about upcoming presentation to the board regarding proposed high school curriculum and reviewed that with the committee. So, it was all in all, a very productive meeting of the CEAP.
Very good. And you also joined me on the DEI Advisory Committee, but as I mentioned last week, they're not meeting this week. We've added 11 new members, or at least we've invited 11 new members from the community. And we had about 30 applicants from, from the community, but we'll talk about that, more about that later. Wellness Committee, have they met or do you have anything to report?
I have nothing for wellness, but I will skip ahead to cares, which is meeting for the first time tomorrow to go over round one. So I'll have more of an update next time.
Excellent. So there, do you happen to know how many applications they have?
Many.
Many. Excellent. All right, good. City of Celine, we're still waiting for Dan Swallow, our new city manager, to get his feet good and wet before we initiate that. And Jennifer Stevan is co, is also with me on that committee. And the last section is miscellaneous. Anything from the board for the good of the order? Oh, something from Jennifer Stevan.
We discussed this, Rachel and I, in our meeting at the Foundation this morning, but I just wanted to pause and recognize the passing of one of our Hornets from the class of 2023 and our thoughts are with his family.
I appreciate that, thank you. We'll move on. We have three discussion items this evening. The Board Finance Committee met this evening and Tim Austin, the Chair, is going to share updates from that meeting.
So our agenda was kind of small this time, but the one, one of the things was account update. And so we're seeing some positive growth in the numbers between kindergarten and ninth grade. Seeing some positive notes there in growth. And, but we are, we're still going to be roughly 66 full-time equivalents down, but that's better than what we budgeted, which was 108. So we're going to be a positive, well, not positive, I guess, I don't want to say positive, but better, 42 to the good from what we budgeted. And then on the state budget, you touched a lot of things. So there, there was a lot, many grants that Celine uses were still in the budget. We don't really know what that plays out or what that looks like dollar-wise at this point in time, but it's good that they kept those in. A lot of times they'll, you know, move things around to make, make the numbers work, which is kind of like the per pupil increase. They're calling this historic per pupil increase. But at the end of the day, when it goes through the whole sausage maker, which is kind of your, you touched on some of the things. It's not, it's still good, but it's not maybe historic.
It's not $455 per student good, it's maybe $200 per student good. It's not four hundred and fifty-five dollars per student good. It's maybe two hundred dollars per student good.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Okay.
Anything else with our finance team?
Super. Thank you. Well, I would like to pass this over. We're now onto the, uh, Policy Committee, and we have a first reading of a bill, the seven four four zero point zero one, the video surveillance and electronic monitoring. And you have your documents in front of you, your red-green copies. And can someone tell me what page that's on, just to save me zipping? If you don't have it, that's fine. I'll, oh, here we go. Six.
So I think we alluded to this at a previous meeting. Uh, to some extent, uh, this was an update for language, um, because, oh, wait, am I looking at it? Sorry. I've just lost my page on my computer. Um, so we were updating the language, um, but we also had some questions regarding, um, you know, video monitoring, privacy of students as well as safety. Um, so, uh, basically, the Policy Committee is recommending that we approve this as seen in your packet.
So anytime we see a green X, that is the option that the committee has, uh, decided upon, right, that we'd like to recommend?
Correct.
Very good. Are there any questions to ask, uh, regarding this? We call this our first reading, and if there are no major issues tonight, can I also recommend that you send, uh, emails to, uh, the Policy Chair and members, that would be Darcy and myself, just to, you know, so we all hear what the questions are. Does that work? Good. Wow. You're blasting along, and I'm grateful for that. Ben, we might need that presentation. Uh, the Policy Committee also spent, uh, some time. We've, we've talked about this at other policy meetings. I think the, uh, one of Dr. Latch's last meetings with us was the idea of, at some point, moving from our, uh, policy service, which was Neola at this point, to, uh, to Trune. Trune is, uh, we're, what is the, the phrase? We are, uh, a mem- it was, oh, well, well, just carry on. Um, we, to make that transition, apparently it is considerably different than what we did when we made the M. A. S. B. to Neola transition in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Uh, in that transition, there were as many as, uh, nine volumes, uh, of policies, nine-volume sets that we went through and looked through all of the various options. Uh, there's a different system for this. Before we get on, I'd like to just say that after discussing this lightly, uh, a few months ago, and then, um, more, slightly more seriously at the last Policy Committee meeting, the Policy Committee, and I, I'll speak for them because they said that they would strongly recommend that we move from Neola to Trune. And as we dig deeper into this and the discussions, y- you may have heard some of the frustrations that we have experienced in making adjustments to the policy, and, uh, it is a very language-heavy set of policies. And in looking at Trune's policies, we've been quite pleased with the differences. And if we look at this presentation very quickly, I'll go through it, Ben, step by step. Here is how they would like us to do the transition if we decide as a board to go with Trune. Uh, we'll down, if we decide we're going with them, we'll download everything from Trune Law, go through all the policy implementation checklist, and obviously start on the easy task, and ask a list of questions for our attorneys, uh, some of whom we've met before. Um, and we need to also start thinking about what online platform we're gonna use. But before we go further, one question that keeps coming up, I've asked from the beginning, members of the public have asked from the beginning, what happens to the policies that we have worked on diligently, uh, including the D. E. I. A. C. Advisory Committee policy, the transgender, non-binary conforming student policy and others? Will they be ported over to Trune? Uh, we call those, I call those bespoke policies, and the answer is yes, they will. And it was not just that. There are other policies, like the School of Choice. We had a couple of tweaks in it. I asked other districts how they dealt with the transfer, and one district, I think, I think it was Dexter, said they had, their policies have been so modified over the years, especially into the finance volume, volume, uh, section five, and they, they spent a lot of time on making sure that those policies went over smoothly. So I'm convinced that Trune will embrace and support those policies. And as there more, more questions will arise, I'm sure. Let's go to the next month. Ben, uh, there's a policy implementation meeting via Zoom. We get to ask all of the questions that we need to ask, and we start tackling the more detailed checklist items. That's in the second month, so you see this as a bit of a process. The third month is the next one, Ben. Uh, and we also get to pepper them with questions, uh, as they arise, and it will filter them through the Policy Committee. We have to finalize policies for presentation to the board. We have sample resolutions, and I have a few links here that I want you to look at a bit later about samples, just to see what and how other districts have used, um, uh, Trune versus Neola. And we also get to upload to the online platform of our choosing, and let's keep on going. And at, at a certain point, we will have a vote at this board table to rescind all of the policies from, uh, from Neola and start following M. A. S. B. The process happened for Neola about May twenty eighteen. And, um, I think, Tim, we were here for that. You were board, board president at the time, or you were, or you were on the, you were on the team, but it was, it wasn't that painful. Uh, let's go on to the next office. They offer, um, sorry. Right. They offer two policy committee meeting, uh, policy meetings. Half of the policy manual is covered on each day. There's no additional cost to attend, no limit to how many district representatives join, so you can attend every single one of them if you wish. Let's go to the next one. Thank you. Uh, quick note, there is the Matt Epling Safe School Law. It's a unique statutory requirement for anti-bullying. We need to have our own special hearing on that, uh, matter, uh, as a special board meeting, but we'll talk about that as we get, uh, farther along. And if, because of that, it usually takes two full board meetings before we're fully transitioned over to Trune. The next one. Uh, now, we talked about platforms. Uh, some school districts, like Fruitport, if you get a chance to look up Fruitport, look up their, their school policies, look under School Board and Policies, and you'll see Board Book. Uh, M. A. S. B. uses Board Book. Uh, I find it's adequate, uh, for hosting the policies. Symbly is another one. West Shore E. S. D. uses that. Uh, some districts, like Adrian, just, uh, upload all the policies to their website. Some use a Google Drive folder. Esconaba does that. I'm not sure how we will do it as we move along. As I, I'm gonna keep looking and talking to other districts, as we all will, no doubt, to see which, which, uh, systems they appreciate best or which work best for them. We also subscribe through Trune to, uh, policy updates, and apparently each July, there's an annual update that's available on Trune Law, and, which is where my very first question arises. We have so many changes in legislation happening all the time. How can we just get along with just one single update? Uh, and that's a question, that's the first question out of my mouth, I'm sure, when we have that. Uh, the board also must vote to approve the updates, and we do them all at once in one mass. The next slide. Uh, oh, the updates include an update summary, a review video, uh, marked PDFs of changes, and, uh, updates of policies available to download that we can review at our, at length in our convenience later. I think there's, uh, maybe two more. Yeah, so the next steps on our part, we need to become familiar with Trune policies, how they look, how they feel, uh, maybe do some crosswalks of policies that we're closer, close to or know pretty well, and take a look and see how, uh, from Neola and see how Trune handles them. And also, uh, feel free to reach out to other districts who've gone through the process, and if we're not sure who they are, I'm happy to generate that list. I, I had the list at some point. I just don't happen to have it with me this evening. And I think there's one more. Is there one more slide? Ben? That's it? Great. So let's, oh, uh, open it up to discussion, and I do have some prices for us and, uh, that I can maybe talk to you about. Also, I have a trend, a, a zipped file of, uh, transition guide, service benefits, manual samples, handbook samples, policy service order form, which we don't have to worry about, and, uh, a list of Tru- uh, Trune policy subscribers, a hundred and fifty-six of them across the state and other states. So if I can answer any questions now, great, feel free to ask them. I may not have the answers, but I can certainly ask them ahead of the next board meeting.
Michael?
Yes, Darcy.
Um, just a note that I think you talked about at your last presentation in the spring, that, um, there's some consistency here because, um, we won't be, we are already talking to Trune about our Neola policies, and this way we can close that gap and, um, use them for both.
So just to be, so just to be clear on that, that's an interesting thing. When a statement, when a question comes up, we don't ask Neola for help. We ask Trune, who are our lawyers, and so are Collins and Blaha, but we ask Trune for, uh, help with the policies. And then we have this intermediary company, Neola, uh, which very, very slowly reacts to our questions, if that. And for ye- for the last year, I don't think that we've even had a rep.
And the, and the consistency continues because they do our handbooks as well, so that we're
They do our handbooks right now.
Coalescing our services.
So it seems like a very short putt, so to speak. That's the, that's my only sports analogy ever. All right. Tim?
Couple of questions. One, cost compared to like what we're already paying with Neola. And then also, I think when we went from M. A. S. B. to Neola, we had a, I, I don't know if it was the Policy Committee that did the heavy lifting, or was it an ad hoc committee? Because, I mean, that's a lot of reviewing to make sure everything moves over correctly, and I think we found that some stuff didn't move over correctly, uh, last time. So, um, was there gonna be an ad hoc type committee to help with that?
That is correct. There wa- it was a heavy lift. The three members of that committee, and it was the Policy Committee, were Paul Heinecke, Karen Delhay, and some fellow named McVeigh. And we, it took months to go through all of those checklists and all those options. Uh, sometimes Scott Graydon would lobby hard for one or another, and we'd have to remind him that it's a job, not a crown. Um, but now in hindsight, there are some cases where I thought it would be better for the superintendent to take on some of the questions, uh, some of the issues. But, uh, to your concern about costs, and I will send you an email from them, but the actual policy manual costs outright, eight thousand dollars. Administrative guidelines cost, the package, costs four thousand five hundred dollars, and this is a one-time fee. The, uh, they also have a model student and employee handbook package, which I didn't think anyone was interested in, for about fifteen hundred dollars, but we'll listen to them, likely make their pitch. Every year, the, uh, recommended updates at this point is, uh, under three thousand dollars annually. Um, and, or it could be less if no updates are needed, and I just laughed at that, um, when I first encountered it. So, uh, I will send to this board, uh, this particular email with, uh, all the zipped folders, and you can do some investigation on your own. Uh, schools that they mentioned that they are working with are, and you might want to tackle one of these if you know anybody there, Dexter, Chelsea, Mylan, Brighton, Novi, Southfield, Ferndale, Van Buren Airport, Mason Consolidated, Blissfield, Britton, Deerfield, Tecumseh, Adrian, Madison School District, Clinton, Northwest, and Columbia. So if you have friends or colleagues in any of those, just give them a call and say, hey, what do you think about this Trune policy service? But, um, and that, so the email that I'll send you all has those prices precisely. Yes, Jennifer Stevan.
I was just gonna, uh, I don't know if we really answered Tim's question about an ad hoc committee.
Um, at this point, I think, well, it's up to the policy, li- by, well, if we decide to do this, we'll be talking about doing this in January, February. We may want an ad hoc committee. We may want to run it through the Policy Committee. I think Paul Heinecke, who was the president of the board at the time, just said, let's just let policy do it. And, uh, I'm okay with that as well, because we won't have anything else to do.
Well, and I, and I, again, something, something that you had pointed out before was that, um, their policies are more concise, and so we're actually sort of trimming down rather than, so we're getting, we're getting tighter in the policy language rather than growing.
If we do go for an ad hoc, am I hearing you volunteer, Tim? Uh, I suspect that it'll, I don't know. It all depends on how we shake up with the next organizational meeting, but I suspect it'll probably be the, the biggest work of the Policy Committee with some outreach to the rest of the, the, the board on certain key chapters or volumes. It's a five-volume set as opposed to a nine-volume set, if that ma- if that makes any sense. Um, we have looked at other policies that were even simpler. Miller Johnson read Almost Like a Haiku is, and, and I thought that was open to problems. Yes, ma'am.
I, I didn't know. Tim, were you asking to be Policy Committee? Because I know that's probably not true. I'm pretty mu- I can guess that one. Um, so I thought of four things while you were talking. Don't need answers to these, but these'll be things that I'll want to consider, um, the next time we talk about this. I'll start with cost, just because you brought it up. So seventeen thousand dollars annually, all in first year, um, potentially with the fifteen hundred sway. I'd like to, um, an analysis of what we've spent with Neola over the past, like, five years.
Can I just clarify that? When you say that much annually, it's a one-time?
I sa- I, I said the first lift, so you said eight thousand.
So.
Year one.
Okay.
Year one, seventeen thousand, if we include the fifteen hundred, um, and then the eight thousand and forty-five hundred, I think, falls away. So just an analysis comparing it, and I'd like to look at Neola, um, since COVID and look at multiple years just because it's been a very ambiguous time, so there might be fluctuation in cost, so that'd be interesting to see.
So the question is just to be clar- to be clear, because, uh, Dr. Kowalski is, or somebody is going to look it up. You would like to know what we spend annually on Neola.
Mm-hmm. Say for the past five years.
Yes. Oh, we can easily get that.
Yeah, not asking offhand. Yeah, just in the future. Um, the, the second thing I was thinking of, is there any type of lame duck period? So how are we insulated from harm or ambiguity while we transfer? So just better understanding, okay, July one, this is our policy, June thirtieth, this is our policy. Just understanding the clear transition, because what if something was to come up with our public comment policy or, or harassment or something? We want to know exactly how that's covered, because we have had transitions where we have to look partially at an old one and partially at a new one.
I get that, and just, I have a partial answer right now, that the, that we rescind the entire previous packet. Now, if there are issues that come up, we, we hope we'll catch as many as possible on the transition. I, I understand that, as, as we discovered, as Tim alluded to, we did lose one or two in the transfer the last time.
Yeah.
Um, nothing, no one was going out of their way to make sure we didn't see it. It just didn't cross over because Neola didn't have a clear policy on such, such a thing.
Yep. Which leads me to number three. Um, like you said, crosswalking all policies. So I, I would not want to just see a sample of their policies. I want to read all of their policies. And I'd like a, um, a match item to item, like in an Excel spreadsheet. So if there's policy, you know, I'll use public comment again because it's one we refer to all the time, like what is their correlation? So you have policy P. O. one, four oh three, or whatever it happens to be, and here's their correlation. That way we can look and see if there's gaps. So if we have, um, a policy on nutrition, and they don't have one on nutrition, we can immediately see that there's a gap there. So I'd like to see like an analysis in columns. And then the last point was, I'd like to understand what the technical transfer is and, and what supports are, so maybe a J. question. So if we pull down exactly, because we have so many revisions and we house these on our website, like, can we cache that and be able to go back and look at all of the individual policies as they lived their last time on Celine Area Schools' website for reference moving forward? And then kind of do a cache of the incoming policies, so you have those two moments in time. So if there's any discrepancies in the future, we have those I. T. records.
I know that that's relatively simple to do, and you, one could even start that themselves in their own, uh, backyard and just download each and every one of our policies and admin guidelines as well. That can be done, but if we can do it all in a single go, that would be great.
Yeah, like a little package.
And as for the crosswalk, I crosswalked, as, uh, Dr. Kowalski can attest, I crosswalked one, the first section. And as I tried to do the next one, it became incredibly difficult because one of our policies may be spread out over three or four of, of Trune's policies, and at a certain point, I simply ran out of time. So if you're, I'm well, wide open to having you take a crack at that, unless you're thinking that this is something that Trune could or should be doing for us.
Do you mean the cross, what was it? Do you mean the crosswalk? Um, I would think it would lie with Policy Committee or ad hoc, whomever ends up taking the, the transition proposal. So this isn't like an implementation, um, task. This is a analysis and conversation before voting task. So like if the Policy Committee recommends that So like if the policy committee recommends that we move to this new policy system, like it's a piece of the evidence to support a possible move. So it has to become, it has to be coming to us pre-vote. So the four were cost, lame duck period, crosswalk, and technical. So I think those are the four things that I would vote on. Like those are the information pieces and then I would vote.
I appreciate that. One thing I, as the person who seems to be taking the lead on this at this point, at this point, is that I will ask all the board members to pinpoint at least one policy that they feel particularly strongly about. You mentioned two right there. I forgot what the, audience participation, because we worked a huge amount on that one and we don't want to lose any of that. And what was the other one that you had mentioned, just off the?
I just mentioned nutrition.
Nutrition was another, thank you, yeah, all right. So if you have any particular, that would make life a lot easier for me trying to put together a crosswalk if I know which policies you're most interested in. So take a look at our own policies and say, yeah, desperately want to make sure we keep that one intact and which parts of it we want to keep intact. And the other thing we have to do is to make sure that Trune will support us on that. And they will. We were very clear with them on that. They, they are our lawyers. They may not always disagree or agree with every aspect of our policies, the way we've written them, but they will back us up in a court of law if push comes to shove because they are our lawyers. Any other questions for the crew? We're sounding pretty positive about making this move at this point, but if I get any comments from the rest of the board saying, oh, let's tap the brakes a little harder, I get that. But before we do, let's take a good, close look at the email that I'm going to send you in the next day with all of this information. I'll send it out before we leave this board meeting tonight. Are there other questions about this process? I will also tell you, I've heard great support from this, if you don't mind me saying, from our superintendent, Dr. Kowalski. Our former superintendent, Scott Gray, sorry, not Scott Graydon, Steve Lottch is, was very frustrated with Neola. And one example, I'll give you a real clear example that he gave me one day. He was so frustrated, he looked up the word weapon for a particular policy or an issue had come up. There were 46 separate instances of policies that related to weapons. Some were in Neola's patch. And he asked Trune what their response was and he said it was two, maybe three. I'm not 100% sure, but you might want to do that search if you get access to a Trune set of policies. All right. If there are no more questions, then we'll go. I have no idea where we are in the agenda. Oh, the consent agenda. Thank you. Consent agenda is listed in this, in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all items. Feel like I'm missing something. No? Of all items in the consent agenda, unless a member of the board requested any one or all, be considered individually. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
So moved Gold.
Lauren Gold, thank you.
Support Berwick.
Dorsey Berwick, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, great. Seven zero, thank you so much. Items on the next agenda, Dr. Kowalski.
I will be presenting on my transition plan for the board and our community next board meeting.
Excellent. Great. We're open to a public comment. Are there any, there is no public comment this evening? Thank you. The next meeting of the Board of Education will actually be held two days from now on October 16th for the purpose of a board retreat. And we are going to enter into closed session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. It's one of the four times we meet throughout the year. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter closed session at, we'll say 8:00 PM with the intent to reopen, open session at approximately, we'll just say nine and round it off. Say again? We can do an eight, 10, we'll start and leave at about nine, 10 at the very latest for the purpose of superintendent evaluation, Section 8A. Under 8A, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into a closed session. So do we have any motion?
Motion, Berwick.
Second.
Tim, is that Tim? Yep, Tim Austin. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. I hear seven ayes. Thank you very much. The rest of the public, because here's the AP thing. Because we're going into closed session, that means the public leaves and it's just the board and any guests that we asked to be here to help us through this evaluation. In this case, tonight, I just believe it's Dr. Kowalski sharing. Ms. Yonkey will not be here. Absolutely not. And so, and it's a closed session to the public. There were eight reasons for going into closed session and we selected one of them tonight. And that was for superintendent evaluation. So thank you very much and we'll escort you out and slam the door behind you.
Be back on. I'd like to entertain a-- thank you, welcome back. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of October 14th at 9:13. Do I have a motion?
No.
That would be Lauren Gold moves, second by what, Nate Henson? He's on the books now. All right, great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have unanimous, thank you very much. The next meeting will be October 16th, but it will be a board retreat. Thank you.